Okay, I have ten thoughts. Well, on the public hearing on the proposed decrease in appropriation of the board of health budget for fiscal year twenty four and the resolution. Would you like to read the resolution?
Mr. Kent, this is Resolution seven twenty four twenty twenty three A. And it's Resolution, Resolution to deappropriate funds for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Whereas the Tama County Public Health Board and the Tama County Board of Supervisors have determined and agreed that a line item in the public health budget needs to be lowered due to the fact that it was for funds not allowed to be used for the purpose they were budgeted for. And whereas both parties have met and discussed this issue on June twenty sixth twenty twenty three. Therefore, be it resolved that fifty one thousand dollars be removed from the total appropriation approved on June twenty sixth twenty twenty three for the public health department.
Okay. Pardon? Yeah. Are there any comments?
Well, you know there is. We got here all again, but in the last forty five minutes, I hope you guys have really thought about this. As I've said before, you've got, I'm obviously greatly opposed to this. I've been told three different times now. So first, when I got this property, nope, shouldn't have passed. Came out, said, okay, great, you can just crush that tank, put a fifteen hundred gallon tank in and one more lateral. That's what they took out of my sale of the house. It was just enough money for that. Okay? Well, then, no, I find out that that can't happen. Then I talked to the Board of Health, which I'm actually shocked in that thing, it says that the Board of Health agreed with you two agreed. Because I don't recall that ever happening or, and I watched that video. And I don't say that you guys would say the word agreed is the correct term for that at all. Um, so then it comes back, okay, you guys are gonna pay. It's not my fault that you guys hired somebody incompetent that wasn't going to do their job. I don't know anything about septic. What was I supposed to do? Dig it up myself and look at it? And go, oh, gosh, this is only a four hundred gallon tank. Oh, I know that doesn't pass. How was I supposed to know that, guys? I trusted the person you hired to do a job. And they didn't. That's not my fault. So again, there was that. Then you, I said, okay, I went to Chris Barron, I said, hey, it's not my fault. You're the new Tama County Sanitarian, not your fault. Let's cut it in half. Let's, let's do this graciously. Let's cut it in half. I'll pay half, you pay half. Walk away with this, or you're not ducking your tail. We're not making a big news feed out of this that Tama County screwed up. And let's just both go on our way. And then I come back and I do all the work like I was told to do by you guys. And now they're like, no, 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 we can't do that. But then, as my mom said, you felt like you did something right, this is what you had to do, but then felt bad enough? Then I stuck around here, that meeting, for half an hour, and now one of you came up to me and said, and John said it yourself, that you were gonna reach out to me. I stood here for half an hour, waiting for one of you to come say, you know what, Ashley, I'm really sorry. I'm sorry it went this way. I'm sorry I couldn't even have the decency to talk to you and tell you what was going on. I waited, and nothing happened. Nothing, not one thing. And now again, I'm being stuck with the bill. But then you felt you were doing something so right that somebody had to contact me to see if I would set up a bank account so taxpayers could pay again? Oh, they're gonna donate money to me for your guys' screw up? And then I'm gonna have to pay taxes on that again to get it out? Like.
Well, who, I don't get the GoFundMe deal.
It was Tammy approached me.
Okay.
And told, said that you guys felt bad and wanted to set up, uh, it wasn't a GoFundMe, it was, um, a bank account.
Just a bank account for donations to help her.
But that's taxpayer money again. Like.
It's all taxpayer money.
Agreed, but they've already paid.
No matter which way you look at it, it's all taxpayer.
But they've already paid.
But, but the part on their side was, they believed they're right due to the law. So they were just trying to be.
Then why did they tell me?
They, they thought they were right.
You, you weren't here for my first comment. I've, I've stopped four lawyers who all say what Carlton said is wrong.
Right.
So what I'm asking you guys to do, again, and I'm pleading, make sure it's right first. Just make sure it's right. I've had no problem bowing out gracefully the first time when I said, I'll pay half, you pay half, whatever. I was trying to do the right thing. I'm asking you guys to do the right thing. It's all, I've talked to numerous people in different parts of the community that know you, that know you, that know you. And each person says you're a good person and you think clearly and you know right from wrong. So what I'm asking is just do that. You don't have to approve this today. Research it, do it, make sure it's right. And if it's right, you know what, I'll bow out. But I am not gonna be snake hold and going, no, we're just gonna do it because one guy told us. When I got four that say it's not. The discovery law applies, that it's technically five years. That you've changed my financial status, which is another lawsuit. Because you've approved something twice and now we're taking it back. Can't do that. So that's what I'm asking today. Just research it, look it up. And for you guys not even to know about the bank account information, like, come on.
They did know.
They did. Okay.
The only one that didn't know was her.
He didn't.
We felt very bad about, I felt bad about the situation.
So then.
And, and I talked to Carlton and he said, I want to send five hundred dollars to put it in the account for the lady. He said, I, he, he felt bad about it. We all feel bad about it. But it's the law.
It's not, though.
But it is the law.
Where's your law degree?
We can't, where's my law degree?
Yes.
It's the lawyer that I was.
So I'm asking you to get another opinion. That's all I'm asking. And if it's the law, which you say it is, if it is the law. I've said, I'll bow down. But when I have four other lawyers, which also it's the law, and I've asked them, I mean, I put two thousand dollar retainer down. That's how bad I'm willing to just prove this point. I mean, that's all I can spend, because now I have to come up with fifteen thousand. But my point is, you guys, do your research. That's, that's all I'm asking. Heard from one lawyer, two from the same firm. That's what I'm asking. And I don't think my request is too much. If you truly feel bad that this is happening, I do not feel my request is too much to ask. Do the research, make sure other lawyers agree. And then I can bow out. But until you do that, I don't think you're doing, one, this county a service. You're hiding behind one lawyer. Make sure it's right. That's all I'm asking. I don't think that's a lot to ask. So, that's where I'm coming from. You guys have heard from me.
There's a second set of attorneys. Well, right, second set? No, they're actually, they're different firms because Carlton's retiring, so it went to a new.
The lady that was in it?
Right, a, a new firm, and, um, so there's actually two different attorneys. Carlton is still working on a little bit of it, but it's going to the other, um, firm.
Taking her, his spot, is what he said in the public health.
Right, right, right. They're, they're, these are, yeah, we, because we have to get into it.
They said she was from the same, from the same group.
They said that.
As her alter?
Yes.
She's, she, she's not from the same group. They're a different firm.
Well, that's, that's the way they, it's been presented that way multiple times. It's the same firm.
And when you, when you voted to hire her, you said she was from the same firm that we said you voted to hire her.
But she's not from macro. She's, she's from a different firm. They're working together and she is, we have two, we have two new attorney, uh, different firms. Um, and she is with one of those firms, but not Carlton's firm.
That's not the way it's presented in the meeting. If you go back and watch the meeting, that's not the way it's presented. And I've watched that meetings. And we need hours of my life, I can't get back.
And the meeting when she was hired, it was presented that she was from the same group of lawyers.
So they, it is the same, it is the same group. It's, um, uh, what are their names? They're new. Um, they are, it is the same group, but it's not the same firm. They're not the same firm. She's coming from a different firm.
I'm gonna say that's really convenient who brought up now, when they've been claiming it's the same firm the whole time. That when we need it to be two different firms, it's now two different firms.
I don't know, there's three different attorneys involved, so.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I was just curious, because I thought with the, with what they had decided to pay out previously, that was under twenty thousand dollars, wasn't it? Between the two.
Mm-hmm.
Then where are we coming up with the fifty one thousand that they keep talking about?
I'm, I'm kind of lost.
That was in a budget for the, it was a line item in the Department of Health.
I don't think, though, I took it, I'm sorry, as the fifty one thousand. Now, I, I said, I'm new to the Board of Health, okay? The fifty one thousand was what the county gives the Board of Health. To, right, a year, right?
Yes, it was a little line item.
Not that line item. That's not a normal, that is not a normal line item.
It's not a normal line.
That's something we put money in, um, that I know of. I, I don't know that it's ever had money in that line item, so.
When I talked to the Tama County Board of Public Health, they said, because this is gonna get published and it's gonna become an uproar and we need to be prepared in case more people come forward.
Yeah.
Which, I, there are about six more.
And it was like fifty one thousand, we agreed, because it was like maybe six thou, because I took it, we had fifty one thousand. That that Board of Health had fifty one thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty four.
That's right, they put it in that line item. Yes, that was in there.
And so we had thought we would give, it was like six thousand or seven thousand to each one of you, not fifty one thousand.
No.
It was never fifty one thousand. But we had that money, is what I, so I don't think it's, I don't know, maybe to take away the fifty one thousand, I guess I didn't, I don't understand it. Somebody need to.
Please.
May I speak before you?
Yes.
Again, Sherri Dumbo, um, I just want to reiterate again, the communication has been very poor between everyone and my daughter. Secondly, you have made a mistake. The county sanitarian passed it when she purchased the, uh, property in two thousand eighteen. Not her fault. Now you're go, you have promised her, put it in the budget, to give her seventy five hundred dollars roughly. Don't, and now you're rescinding that after you'd already made the promise to her. She put in the septic system, she is now responsible for the fifteen thousand dollars. Do not make a second mistake before you do your research. Make sure this is accurate before you go forward. That's all I'm gonna say.
Actually, uh, Carl Stambes says it was two-year statute of limitations. Did you find out something different?
Five.
That's a big deal.
Five-year statute of limitations based on discovery law that changes the property value of your home.
That's huge.
And I have that in writing in front of my lawyer. And that's, that's what I'm asking. That's all I'm asking, because the, the discovery law applies. Like, I can look at my leg and it's broken and I can see they did something wrong. Obviously, I'm gonna know negligence right away. How do I know negligence underground? I don't. You guys all trust me to do a job at Tama County. I teach eighth graders. If I came up and told you the quadratic formula, how many would you guys know?
What?
Exactly. But I know what I'm doing there and I'm comfortable there. I expected the Tama County Sanitarian to know what he was doing and he didn't. This is mind-blowing.
What if you had a bridge in the construction and the inspector messed up on that? And you had a death or a serious injury? How do you get all that? It's a minute comparison, what could be?
Gentlemen, I think you need to take the time to research what Ashley is saying, okay? This is a really sticky situation. I think you need to just take the time and figure out what this discovery law is. You need to get a couple of different opinions before you make any further decision on this. This needs to be tailored. And you need to do your homework and talk to a couple of different lawyers and figure out what is she is saying is the truth. That's the least you can give this lady and also the other homeowner. I'm surprised that that person isn't here. Pete couldn't be here. Okay, but you need to give yourself the time to get into that matter, figure it out before you make any major decisions today, okay?
You guys are making this count, you'll do your math.
Okay, I have a comment to make, ma'am. We have been told over and over, we said that we were gonna make these payments. We have never said that we were making payments. I've been in Board of Health and Department of Health. We have never said that.
Did you approve the budget?
We approved a line item in a budget.
Okay, then you, that's you. And if you wanna know that line item, fifty one thousand dollars, excuse me, Tama County Board of Public Health, what does this line item mean?
It doesn't say in that line item what it was for.
Then why didn't you ask?
What was it for?
Then why didn't you approve it?
What else?
I mean, I'm not up for normally approving fifty one thousand dollars that I don't know. I mean, you just got up there and asked what two items were for and asked.
What was it for, Bill? If it wasn't for that?
This is where communication is very important.
Well, especially if she says it's not a normal line item, isn't that something you would have asked about? To, to clarify for something that large? And then to approve the budget with the Board of Health making those statements that they were planning to use it for her payments? Just to go back on it after she's already made the, the fix for, for this error, I think makes it a lot different situation than if it was, if you were looking at it before any decisions had been made, before the budget had been approved. Just having approved it already, having the line items there, the Board of Health knew what the line items were for. To go back on it, I think, changes a lot after she's already made the, the upgrade. And it changed her property value and it changed her financial status now.
And have I known it failed? I would have requested something from this. I mean, I had two people wanting to buy my property. Fight it out, whoever's gonna do the septic. But for forty-five minutes, I mean, forty-five minutes before I closed, I had my lawyer or my realtor got a text message, I think. And I get that that's on the Tama County Sanitarian, I understand that. But that's where, when you saw the fifty one thousand dollars, ask questions. Like, I've been jerked around for a year. I can do this, no, can't do that. I can do this, no, I can't do that. I don't know what else to do, guys, but to plead to you, and unfortunately, you guys hold my financial status in your hands. And no, I, I did ask, Bill, you did quote last time, that whoever paid the money, the state could come back to you and you would have to pay it. So I reached out to the state. That's not true. They won't, they don't do that. So I, I, seriously, guys, the last three weeks, that's all I've done is research and meet with lawyers and try to figure out. I stood up here and told you, it's the principle of matter to me. And financial matter. Single mom, three kids, teacher, don't make a lot. Moved to town because I couldn't afford the gas back and forth all the time.
I don't see why you guys are bawling at this. She's going way over the line of agreeing to pay half down. She wouldn't even have to do that. In the long run, the way it sounds, you guys will be paying, or will be paying, twice or three times as much with all the fees. Thank you.
It's a good point. You have people come in here and they have taxed different things that they, they negotiate, hey, I'll pay half, you pay half. Um, again, I completely oppose it. Um, I've talked to you guys before, Ailer and Cooney represent Tama County as well. Get another opinion. They're not affiliated with Carlton or Miss Kayla or any of these new people. Get a second opinion, because I've heard the same thing, talking to attorneys, that it's also sometimes from discovery. It's like two to five years or something like that after that, so really need to look into that. Um, it's just sad to, to see that citizens are having to fight the county. I know I've said that a thousand times before, but here's another instance. For people not doing their job and it's, you know, some of the times it's a same individual, we're having to fight the county. It just makes no sense. She doesn't need to be spending her summer researching, getting attorneys. She's got kids, she should be spending time at summer break. You guys need to do your homework, find a different attorney, look into what, does it make sense? If she's got four that says that it makes sense, that sounds pretty good. If that many attorneys say that that's true, you're gonna get more and more people and it's gonna look bad to have all these people on the septic side suing against the county, so. Something to really think about and it's just, it's not helping your guys' image. You can't just hide behind Carlton or his firms he works with. Try some other people, that's what other counties are doing.
It also looks bad that Carlton, that Todd Apple had been signed before this whole thing came to light. Kurt Helmer mentioned a month ago that the county is gonna be suing the county. That looks bad. And you had already approved that the money would be in the budget for, on July first. That's in, that's public record, that's in the newspapers. So all of this draws a lot of negative attention to Tama County. It's just not a good situation at all.
Back in early June.
Fifty one thousand dollars that she said you got, was that an open-ended thing? Public Health can do what they want with that? You don't specify what it was for.
They did not specify, no?
It's for an operating expenses or? And who, who is, who is responsible for the sanitarian? Is he under you?
He's under the Board of Health.
Or is he under the Board of Health?
It's under the Board of Health.
Under the Board of Health, that's what I thought. So he, they are feeling responsible for it. And those volunteers, we were volunteers, we didn't get paid for doing that. We sat at those meetings and we listened to Dr. Mallory, he figured, well, he knew what he was doing. And we, like I said, we had several, I think two or three, two for sure sanitarians while I was on that board. And I don't think they were even told, did you have a piece of paper? Did you show them the rules or did somebody show them the rules they were supposed to follow? Every property that was sold in Tama County was supposed to have their septic tanks checked. Unless they went to a family member. And we had somebody on the supervisors who was going to give his acreage to his son. So he didn't want that. So one of three people decided that. Maybe that wasn't a good idea. Because now we're running into problems where they, people are not informed well, or the correspondence isn't good. The sanitarian fell down on two separate occasions and didn't tell these people what they were expected to do. Like she said, what do I know about sewers? They're under the ground. If they work, fine. If they don't, you got it in the basement. I know, some of these septic tanks on these farms worked very well. They were probably handmade. They weren't bought in. I know the one we have on our farm that was taken out now, but it worked fine, but it was just a bunch of bricks.
That's what this is.
And we cannot have citizens responsible for sewers when we have a sanitarian who's supposed to know what he's doing. And if he doesn't do his job, who's responsible for him? Board of Health took responsibility. They put it in their budget from that fifty one thousand you guys gave them that you don't know what's, what's supposed to be used for. If they was slush money, did they fix them for things that needed to be done and the, if their sewer backed up or something? I don't know. But I think we're not gonna fix the problem unless we start communicating better, unless we start telling people what their responsibilities are. Don't, just don't stick them in a job and say, hey, learn. Because they don't teach practical stuff in college anymore. You learn it out of a book. As a nurse, I learned it on the floor. The kids that are nurses now, they learn it out of a book and you better hope they know which hole they're working on.
Um, in June, when Carlton called, um, he said there are two ways to stop the Board of Health from making those payments out. He said you could sue them to stop it with legal action or you could rescind their funds. During that Board of Health meeting on the twenty-sixth, when you all were there together, um, it did seem like Carlton made some very persuasive arguments as far as the legality. But he did not provide which laws he was referring to as far as you cannot pay. He just was referring to the part of this, the sewage law, uh, I believe it's number sixty, chapter sixty-nine, about where they mentioned the two-year statute of limitations, but that doesn't account for discovery. And like, um, like Brent Heron, our county attorney suggested, if it's an ongoing issue, that's not just based off the, the, the time of the inspection, that, you know, that's an ongoing problem. And could, you know, in criminal cases, you know, it's not like you embezzled just this one time and it drops off. It's an ongoing thing. That could pertain to this and, and like Ashley mentioned, I don't know that you've done a lot of due diligence on this as far as getting second or third opinions. It has seemed like, I believe her name's Kayla, it has seemed like she was presented as a coworker or from the same firm or a protege. It seemed like she was from the same group as Carlton and was working very closely with him to take over. Not that she was a completely separate firm. She was taking direction, she was following his lead. The only thing she deviated from him on was the fact that she was okay with PDFs versus getting printed copies of all your records. Um, I, I just, I feel like the way he presented at that meeting, and this is following up on his original thing, sue the Board of Health or take away their funds, and I just, I think you guys should possibly do a little more research into if it is actually illegal to make that payment or if it's just not required to make their payment. Because that, that's a big difference, required to make a payment or not allowed to make a payment. There's, there's a little bit of a difference there, and if the Board of Health could make that right, and they wanna make it right with a settlement that they already agreed on, as long as it is not actually illegal, which it sounds like there's a bit of a gray area. I think that's some.
Not according to Carlton. I said there's no gray area.
But you haven't gotten other opinions.
He said it's illegal.
And he hasn't provided proof on where that law is.
It is in the code. He did pass out paperwork when we were there that day. And
So how four other?
So just you guys, just take into account this for a second. So we have to follow the code. We, we don't get to use civil attorney, regular attorneys or anything. We have to follow the code. What they're doing is with the code, it's not because, um, of discovery or anything. I, we, we have to follow the code. That's how we run the county. Everything has to go by code. So that's where Carlton is a big person, is that code. He tells us what we can and can't do out of the code. It's not that they don't wanna do it, it's that he said, you, there is a statute of limitation, a two-year statute of limitations. And then there is a section in the code that does say that if they pay, if they pay out-of-county funds past that statute, they have to pay it out of their pockets.
So why would I contacted the state of Iowa to see if that was true, but that is not true?
I, you know, I can't, I, I can't tell you, but I can tell you this is what our attorney is saying.
And do you have?
I'm asking for a different attorney.
But we have three attorneys. We have three different attorneys right now.
Do you have?
And they're all working on it.
Supervisors, do you have the paperwork that Bill, that Carlton provided that says that part where it is illegal? Because, I, I mean, if you could provide that, we've asked that previous meetings and you didn't have it. I didn't know if you would bring it to be prepared for this meeting. Do you have where it says that that payment would be illegal? I'm not a lawyer, but I have read through the code in various areas. I've done searches, I've done, I've tried ChatGPT. I have not found anything that has said, yes, it is outright illegal to make payments after that statute of limitations. I know that's not a law degree, but that, that gives me some pause to think that there may be some gray areas that Carlton just doesn't wanna pay out because he's your insurance company. And insurance companies don't like to pay out.
I don't think that's yet at all.
Do you have that paperwork?
Tammy, would you have that paper available? You know, I, I will get that from Carlton and I think I probably. Well, if you had it, and all three of them had it, surely there's a copy in this building somewhere. Well, I'm not in this building, so I would have my daughter. Well, I don't, I can look if there is.
And why weren't you prepared for the meeting and had that document in front of you? And if she had four other attorneys, these attorneys have to know the code too. And none of them have told her, you don't have a case. Not one of them. So do your research before you change this girl's financial situation. That is all we are asking.
And if it's five years, insurance will make the.
And if it's five years, insurance will make the, your insurance will pay for it. She said, what was that?
And the Board of Health had consulted an attorney, our county attorney. Granted, you've always said he's more of a prosecutor, but he is, he should be versed in county code as well. Maybe not as well as Carlton in certain areas, but I would think he would have done some research as well before he followed through with the Board of Health. And if that's not the case, that's another county issue where we, we should, you know, be asking questions and working together.
And it's concerning with the fifty-one thousand, that's, so let's come out of taxpayers' money anyway. If two people were promised, give them the money, what are you gonna do with it otherwise? Is it just a slush fund? Is it going back to Carlton for?
Go back to your general fund.
So back to Carlton for legal fees?
No, it goes back to our general fund, not Carlton.
What's general fund, and what does that account for?
That's what we pay.
It counts for everything that runs this county.
Everything to do with county, we all have individual funds and then we have.
So you're paying the Tama County sanitarian and stuff for general, like, they get a budget out of the Tama County? I'm sorry, I just.
I know you're irritated, I don't, I don't blame you.
Oh, I'm, Tammy, I'm beyond irritated.
I mean, the problem, you know, and, and I wanna help as much as I can, and I will get you that paperwork. And if they want another attorney's opinion, we can get another attorney's opinion this week. But don't, but I don't want you to be upset if it's the same thing, because I'm concerned because of the code. That's why, it's not about the civil stuff, it's not about that, it's because we have to follow the code.
There's also another thing, Bill, that was promised, and once you put it in there, saying you were gonna pay it to me, and then you didn't. So this is what, this is what I got from, the all four lawyers, you were very consistent on this part. So that's why I'm asking you to do this second thing, because it has nothing to do with the code. It has nothing to do with Carlton saying I have a two-year statute of limitation, has nothing to do with that. But what you did approving that fifty-one thousand dollars was promise to pay me the seventy-five hundred dollars.
Public, public health, public health promised to pay you.
Yes, but they approved it.
They approved it.
Right, okay.
Correct, so let me finish. So, when promising to do that, and I waited to hear till this idea was told, I had to wait till Board of Supervisors approved this. I got the call from Tama County Public Health saying, yep, it's approved, go ahead and put in your septic system. I waited for that, to figure out what was gonna happen. Once that was approved and once I got a go-ahead from Tama County Public Health saying I could do that, and now by rescinding this money, you have changed my financial status. That in itself is something completely different than the two-year statute of limitation.
Right.
That is all I'm, like, this is why I'm asking you to know exactly what you are doing before you take this out. Because right there is another, I don't wanna say quote, law broke, but it is, that it can still hold you accountable for the money. Because you already promised and now changed my financial status, which you can't do. That's why I'm asking you to just make sure you guys know everything about this. Okay, now, she's come back with this, have we, we've done this with promises money, is there truth to that? Just make sure first.
I, I don't see anything getting fixed here today for some reason, but I, Carlton found out what I thought about his laws in that meeting.
I know.
I, I just think there's the right thing, the right thing to do and the wrong thing to do, I don't care any break the code or whatever. Nobody's gonna get killed over this situation, any situation like this.
No.
If that, well, then if it came to, to, somebody found it or whatever, you read it in a paper or whatever, you, it would be done, it would, nobody was, nobody was gonna get hurt, nobody would be hurt. I just, I, I just think laws and codes and stuff get to the T too much. And Carlton's definitely that dude. I, I welcome the day when he retires, I don't have to hear what Carlton said. I have nightmares about that, but anyway. We're not willing to do something about it, how I can, I just sue us.
I don't want it to come to that though, guys, why do you think I tried to do the right thing the first time?
That's.
I have a question. Could you elect us to break the laws?
I will never elect you again. And no, I elected you to do the right thing for Tama County. And you don't even know it's breaking the law yet, Bill, because you're not even willing to look into it further. That's all I'm asking, Bill, look into it further. I called you out of the goodness of my heart that day. And you told me over the phone, no, I understand where you're coming from, Ashley, we really wanna do the right thing, and this, and this, and this. And then you had John tell me that you didn't have my number to even call me back to tell, I waited for, I said, I expect a personal phone call from you after the June twenty-sixth meeting, and you promised me you would. I'm still holding my breath. So, I'm asking you to look further. Make sure you're doing the right thing, and you're hiding behind Carlton that there's a two-year statute of limitations. What I just brought up to you has nothing to do with this two-year, two-year statute of limitations. Look into it, make sure we're right. You talk, let me do good and bad, we know right from wrong, so make sure you're right. That's all I'm asking. And if I'm wrong, I've said it twice, I'll bow out gracefully. Not something I'm good at, but I will. But make sure you're right.
What is the harm in tabling this today and doing some research? Please tell me that.
I'm gonna stop public comment right now, okay? Because I wanna take action on something. I want to table this for at least two weeks.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have done some research, it'll come out someday. And there's gonna be a hell of a lot of people ain't gonna like it.
Well, and I wanna also say.
Now.
In sense, none, every other room will be doing the same thing she did, it would happen to us. So put you guys in her shoes.
Are you okay to table it? All right, two weeks.
Are we okay?
Yeah, I think it's.
Two weeks?
I, I think we look at.
Men, and that's because I will not be here next week.
Be here next week.
So.
So we'll just.
We're gonna get paperwork?
We'll contact our, we'll contact the other attorneys and, um, and we'll get the code, we'll bring the code and stuff for you, so you have the code and.
Ashley, why don't you give them the names of your attorneys to do the contact, and let them contact those attorneys?
I, I, I totally get it, I, I think we're talking about two different things though. We really are, because we're talking about the code and following our code, and then we're talking about civil things. And I think that's where the difference is, and I think you very well might be right that you can sue for five years. But again, as a county following the code, I think we can't do anything, so that's what I'm saying.
Then why don't we look into it prior to approving it?
We had, it, it, yeah, I have nothing to do with that, so I'm not gonna say anything. I know you got a letter, um.
From Chris, it's the only letter I've received.
No, you got a letter.
Tammy, I'm telling you, don't tell me.
No, when I, like, when I turned it in to insurance.
I never got a letter from Carlton.
No, no, you got it, you got a letter from Mike Wong, um, you and Mr. Polley both did.
I got a letter, the only letter I have, and I can go to my files, because it's the only one I have, because Tama County Board of Public Health called and asked me to, if I had that letter, and they said, we didn't get a copy of one either. I said, I don't have, I don't have, uh, the only letter I have is from Chris.
Is that because you were, was it in between you were moving?
Nope.
Okay.
Was it a certified letter?
Because I have copies of letters that they sent you guys.
Well, I was asking Tammy, was it a certified letter?
I, I don't know, I don't know. I didn't send those letters, I.
I would like a copy of that letter.
I absolutely can do that for you. I have that.
I, I don't need the letter.
No, for her, I'll get it.
Like you're looking right at me, I'm like, I, I don't need the letter.
She, I, yeah, I mean, she's entitled to that stuff, so.
Plus during the meeting.
I do know there's one comment that wanted me to make, so.
And my turn that you wanna make, lady. Just wanna do the right thing, don't.
Yeah, um, this is, this is on a totally different direction and stuff. Most of you know me, my name's Randy Brodigan, I'm here representing Project Aware and stuff. I got just a short little thing I'd like to read to you and stuff. Um, I don't know if you guys know, but Project Aware just did a river cleanup on Iowa River. Um, which started on the ninth, went through the fourteenth and stuff. And, um, we cleaned up fifty-eight miles of the river. We had a total of three hundred and fifteen volunteers for the entire week. We averaged a hundred and ninety-seven volunteers on the water every day. And then we had some new people, we had a hundred and seventeen new people that's never done a river cleanup with us before. And I was part of the committee on, um, making arrangements to, uh, take care of the recycle and also the waste that we got off of it and stuff. And this was our twentieth year doing the river cleanup, we travel all over the state of Iowa, we pick a river and we do it. And I have been involved for nineteen years at the twentieth and stuff too. Um, we had volunteers from Iowa, Arizona, Colorado, Massachusetts, Michigan, Minnesota, Missouri, um, Mississippi, Nebraska, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, South Dakota, and Wisconsin. That came to Iowa to clean up the Iowa River through our county and stuff. So to me, that's a very good thing and stuff. We had a low number this year, it might seem high here, but it is low to me. Um, we took out a total between our trash and recycle, a twenty-one thousand six hundred, or twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty pounds. Out of that number, we recycled twenty thousand five hundred and twenty pounds of that material that we took out. That gave us a ninety-six percent recycle rate this year, which is one of our higher years that we've hit. Um, we usually are around the eighty-four to eighty-six percent, and this year we hit ninety-six percent, which I'm very pleased with that. And, um, I've gotta give a kudos to our, um, commission, for our landfill commission for agreeing, because I spent two months prior to this, um, negotiating a deal with them and stuff for tires. We had, we pulled out one hundred and sixty-one tires, which is a total of five thousand one hundred and sixty pounds. We had scrap metal and stuff, and we had a local scrapper, um, that provided a dumpster for us, K and M, um, Larry, me and stuff, so it was very gracious of him to do that with no charge. And we ended up with eight thousand seven hundred and eighty pounds of scrap metal, and this is all pulled out of the Iowa River. And then we had, um, miscellaneous recyclables like refrigerators, stoves, and, uh, just different appliances we'd pull out, uh, six thousand five hundred and sixty pounds. And we accumulated a total, and this went to the landfill, of eight hundred and forty pounds of garbage. It was totally garbage, and that, part of that is what we produce as far as doing our cleanup. Because we had, I don't know if any of you, out at the Tama County Lake during this, we had, um, over a hundred and twenty-five people stand every night for the, for the week that we did it. We was out here three nights at the lake, and then we spent two nights at Franklin Park and Belle Plaine. So we put four percent of the garbage that we took out of the river in our landfill. And we had a hundred and thirty-six sponsors, and us participants who volunteered to do this, we paid forty-five dollars a day to do it. I know it sounds crazy that we're paying to do it, but a lot of this goes to, because it, it costs us, um, anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year to sponsor this. Is what we're paying out in actual cash between vehicles and random boats, because we, we rented, well, put, but to put online two hundred people, we need four hundred boats. Because it's all done out of canoes and stuff. So, and I would like to thank Kurt, because he did, uh, he was one of the three members here that was at the commission meeting. I'd like to thank him for showing up in that commission meeting and allowing the landfill to waive all tire fees and the dumping fees, so we can do that and stuff, so that was a big benefit for us. So if anybody has any questions. I'll make sure everybody knows it, but if anybody has any questions about what we're actually doing and stuff.
You say what, you're moving so low now?
And we did, and we did have to skip a section because of the low water. The section that went through the Squawkey property, we worked for four and a half months getting permission to go through that area. And then we had to vacate it because of water levels, and I was one of them on the scouting team that went out. And we tried to cut a path through it so we could get our boats in, but we just couldn't do it because we had a major obstacle there, a big log jam that we would have had forty-two hundred boats. Because that was our biggest day, we would have had forty-two hundred boats, uh, three quarters of a mile.
Do you ever come across beaver dams that are obstacles in your way?
In cricks, small cricks.
And then, so you started when and you, and now where do you go? When did you start?
We started, uh, we did it July ninth.
Okay.
Through the fourteenth of this month.
Now you.
And next, next, uh, year, we will pick another river and we'll do the same thing.
Do you have a website?
Yes.
Because that's where I.
Iowa Project Aware.
Okay, okay.
Where do you start at?
We started, we, our original plan was starting in Marshalltown, but we ended up doing, uh, eight miles north of Marshalltown, uh, because we had to cut out the Squawkey section and stuff, so we did that to have it overlap, so we could still get our mileage that we wanted.
You cannot go through the Squawkey or?
We couldn't because of the water levels. We had the permission to go through and stuff, but water levels deemed it unsafe for our people to.
Even though you're, even though you're underwater, you could have Squawkey permission?
Yes, we have, we have permission from every landowner. We send out letters to everybody who has land there, because the Iowa River is not a meander in this area. So once you step out of the boat, you're on private property, so you have to have permission to actually enter private property. There is a high water level line that we can still go by and stuff, there's some legalities in there and stuff. We still have to respect the rights of everybody who has property alongside, along the river. Because they own under the river as well, so. Any other questions?
Thank you for giving us that update.
No problem.
Thank you for.
Thank you, Randy.
Yep. Thanks, Randy.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you for letting me talk. I know I was on the agenda.
I'll come work.
It's okay.
How big a fridge can you put in that canoe, Randy?
How big a what?
How big a fridge can you put in that canoe?
How big a what is?
Refrigerator, when you pick him up. Well, I have had a complete V-eight engine with manifold, carburetor, everything on it in, in my car. And paddled through five sets of rapids. A lot of work. Thanks for doing that, I don't problem. Been doing it all my life. I was expecting to see maybe one of our supervisors show up out there just to see how many people we have.
Yeah, that's a great.
Well, it was brought up the.
I know, I know.
You know, my, my memory, I can write stuff down and still miss things, that's him.
How you doing today?
Good, how's yourself?
Not too bad.
I mean, he has to understand, please. So, maybe I'm not.
How can a woman always turn around and blame it on the man?
Absolutely, every day. Anyway, we're having lunch out at the Nature Center. Everybody. Nature Center. You're already appointed or unappointed?
Um, we got that meeting at eleven, so.
Yes, okay, so that's, is that what I'm saying?
Dan's gonna have, I think gonna have their ear, because they only give us one year warranty.
Five, five years. Yes, right.
Those dollars.
And you can't, if you do this for your, you would not accept anything.
Well, then, I think somebody told Dan to, they said, you can give us credit.
Well, then I think somebody told Dan to give us credit.
So, follow us to help.
So it'll be interesting. I think Dan's man, I just have to say.
All of the boys that are all in town, they're all, they're all approved. Sounds like building a new house and putting all the floors in and they, they, they're all stuck up, so they're going, I'm like, mom, say. Yeah, we'll give you a year warranty.
Wow, no, you're ripped out and you're just doing.
That's what should happen.